Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The time is now seven oh one P M. Before we start our regularly scheduled council meeting, we do have a public hearing on two ordinances. These ordinances stood a first reading at the previous council meeting. They will have a public hearing this evening, and if everything goes well, they'll be on the agenda for the next council meeting for a second reading and adoption. This is going to be ordinance eleven eighty-four and eleven eighty-five. We'll start with ordinance eleven eighty-four. Ordinance eleven eighty-four is a ordinance concerning a proven budget amendment two thousand twenty-five dash zero eight for the receipt of expenditure of donations for a police canine. It's an ordinance by the mayor and city councils of Havertide Grace by the authority of Article eleven E of the Maryland Constitution, the local government article, the annotated code of Maryland, and section thirty-seven of the Havertide Grace City Charter for the purpose of amending the city budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five to address the reallocations of funds for the city of Havertide Grace for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five. Is anybody in the audience this evening who is here to speak on ordinance eleven eighty-four? Yes, sir. Good evening and welcome to the meeting. May I please have your name and address for record?
Good evening, Mayor. My name is Kirk Smith, eight four zero at Seco Street, Havertide Grace, Maryland, two one zero seven eight. I'm a proud voting member of this council. I'd like to address ordinance eleven eighty-four and the fact that a canine officer Mieko, Miko, in training is going to be well appreciated in this town or city. I'd like to point out that the Havertide Grace Police Department just had a great drug bust, and I would, I would hope that our new canine officer in training will be able to assist with that further. So congratulations on that. Well done, and I'm glad no other, no officers had any secondary contact or anything. I want to ensure that the council looks at this seriously and make sure that this budget amendment is done right. One of the best officers in my years, a pioneer at one of my favorite places is Canine Cody. And I've liked all the officers that I've met canine-wise since then. So hopefully this will be another proud tradition and a great friend to the city and the police department. Good? I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else in the audience this evening to speak on ordinance eleven eighty-four? Any comments from the council? Without any further public comment or comments from the council, I now close public hearing on eleven eighty-four. The time is seven oh four. I now open public comment on public hearing for ordinance eleven eighty-five concerning establishing the city's water districts by ordinance of the mayor and city council of Havertide Grace, Maryland, directed pursuant to the authority of Article eleven E of the Maryland Constitution, the local government article, the annotated code of Maryland, and sections thirty-three and thirty-four of the Havertide Grace City Charter to establish the city's water districts. Is anybody in the audience this evening to speak on ordinance eleven eighty-five? Yes, sir.
Same person, same address. Thanks for having me back up, Mayor. Water districts are a good thing. We'll just start right off the bat. I checked out all the lines. It looks great. The addendum with the map, once I blew it up, looked, looked fine. I had some questions, though, as I was looking at it. I noticed that there is only three water towers. For some reason, I thought we were going to have a fourth. Is that upcoming?
Working on it.
So like a...
More like a water tank than a water tower.
I'd love to have a water tower somewhere around Revolution and forty that kind of is like Bully Rock. You know, a nice tall water tower that welcomes everybody to Havertide Grace, kind of like the one up at Bully Rock does. I think that is the ideal location. We already have a water pump stationed there, if I remember right. And, yeah. We have fifteen thousand people now, give or take.
The, the city's gonna need another water tower in the near future if we continue to build west or, and, but I said, you know, most likely tank. Tanks are half the price of a tower, but you need elevated land, so we're looking for land and looking for funding. I mean, it's not an emergency right now, but we know it's gonna be something that we have to get done in the next couple of years, so.
Pumping uphill is more difficult than pumping to a tower.
Yeah. It's all about keeping good water pressure.
It is.
Ask the fire department.
Speaking of which, they're here, and they understand that. That's pretty much all I had. I think it's a great idea. I like the drawing. It helped explain a lot. I just, yeah. You guys got this. Hopefully tomorrow, everybody that's up on the dais, soon after, will have the same plan, and we can move forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We're still on public hearing for ordinance eleven eighty-five, establishing the city's water districts. Anybody else in the audience to speak? Any comments from council? Councilmember Robertson?
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Can you refresh my memory? Was this based off of the, the Black and Veatch work that was done with the water tables?
This is based on the water model of the city's engineer, I believe it's EA Engineering or GHD, sorry, GHD Engineering. This is based on their, the water model study and the recommendations that came from that.
Roger that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, I now close ordinance, I'm, I'm sorry, I now close the public hearing on ordinance eleven eighty-five. The time is seven oh eight. Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The time is now seven oh eight, and I'm gonna start the scheduled council meeting of the mayor and city council of Havertide Grace. I will call the roll. Council President Ring Sager?
Here.
Councilmember Robertson?
Here.
Councilmember Booker?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Boyer?
Here.
Councilmember Shinagus?
Here.
All council members are present. Please join me for the pledge allegiance and opening prayer.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could kindly ask everyone to please remain standing, as it is a great pleasure to welcome Pastor Peggy Norton of Encouraging Souls Ministry. It's very nice to have you here this evening. Welcome.
Thank you once again. Greetings to everyone. May we pray, by the way, come together on this glorious day just to say thank you. Thank you for a new day, a day that we've never seen before. As we begin this meeting, God, we ask that you will be in the midst of it all. As the change that may come on tomorrow, allow every heart to be able to receive the change. Bless all the council, oh God, and whatever has to be done, let it be done with joy and pleasure for the city of Havertide Grace, for the great things that have already been done and yet to be done. We ask that you bless the residents, all those that are coming and going, because we know that all good things work together for those that love the Lord. Amen.
Amen. Pastor Norton, thank you so much for your time. Thanks for being here. Please be seated. Item three, I'm, I'm sorry, item five, the approval of minutes. We have a couple minute meetings here. City council meeting minutes of April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, do I have a motion to approve? I have motion by Councilmember Booker, second by Councilmember Jones. Questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I will be abstaining from the council meeting minutes vote and the closed session due to my absence.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. City council meeting minutes of April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five are approved, five zero, an affirmative. Item B, city council closed session meeting minutes, April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, votes from the closed session?
Some moves. We want the votes for the closed, we're gonna read the minutes for the closed session, and, okay. So I will read this into record. Topics discussed: appointed, appointment of director of Department of Public Works. Action taken: motion by council president, seconded by council member Booker to approve the appointment of and three-year contract for Joe Conaway to serve as the director of Public Works. Motion passed, five to zero.
Thank you, Council President. Council, I have a motion to approve those minutes.
Some moves.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Booker, seconded by Councilmember Shinagus. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Closed session meeting minutes are approved, five zero, an affirmative. Item C, city council public work session minutes from the budget work session of April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Council, I have a motion to approve those minutes.
Some moves.
Second.
A motion by the council president, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. City council, public work session minutes from the budget work session meeting of April twenty eighth, two thousand twelve, those, two thousand twenty-five, those minutes are approved, six zero, an affirmative. Okay, we're now up to item six, comments from citizens. This is the part of tonight's meeting agenda. If you have, if you wish to speak on an agenda item, now's the time to do so. Or if you're here to speak on another matter of city business, this is also the time to do so. Normally what I do, if anybody prefilled out a speaker form, I'll call on those citizens first. And once I call on all the forms first, any member of this audience wishes to speak, just raise your hand. Be recognized. We ask that you keep your, your, your time up to two, three minutes. So I'd like to first call Ms. Carrie Parsons. Good evening, Ms. Parsons.
Good evening, Carrie Parsons, at Seco Street here in Havertide Grace, council president, council members, mayor, and my fellow citizens. This is regarding ordinance eleven eight one. I appreciate the set standard for the Susquehanna Hose Company at three point six cents. However, in my personal opinion, we are possibly shortchanging our fire company as a whole. Each apparatus requires extensive maintenance, and maintenance costs are not going to be decreasing anytime soon. Everyone and anyone who owns a vehicle, you're aware of those maintenance costs associated with the vehicles. Except for these apparatuses that go out all the time require additional maintenance beyond your average vehicle. Each piece of equipment our firefighters use requires maintenance, and they have a life expectancy. They don't ever ask for a property owner if they have insurance before putting out a fire or rescuing a boater or a motorist after a collision. When we call nine one one, they respond in force. And they don't ask questions. Just like when I called nine one one for an odor of smoke in my house, upon the arrival, the very first question, this gentleman back here asked me was, are you okay? And is there anyone else in the house? And that was with an entire company of fire trucks. They support every city-sponsored function from our fireworks to our First Fridays and everything else in between. This council's aware of single ramification when a maintenance is delayed, or you have an unexpected failure for a piece of equipment. But Susquehanna Hose Company, our fire department, cannot delay any maintenance on any piece of equipment or go beyond a single life expectancy on anything, their gear, their equipment. It must be removed for their safety and for our safety. The fiscal year two thousand twenty-six budget is moving forward. And in my personal opinion, we need to further support the Susquehanna Hose Company by increasing the set standard to four point oh cents with the upcoming budget, please. I greatly appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parsons. And Ms. Parsons, I'll also have you down for another form for budget two thousand twenty-five dash zero nine. Would you like to talk about that now as well?
No, sir.
Okay.
In a little bit.
Okay.
I know that the fire department's here probably to speak on the same thing.
Okay. Okay, I have a form. Christopher Hirsch? I'm kidding. Scott Hirsch. I just rad you out. Chief Scott Hirsch and President Joe Mill. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you. Good evening. Joseph Miller, two sixty-one Alliance Street, Havertide Grace. I'm here tonight to speak as the president of the Susquehanna Hose Company for the Susquehanna Hose Company. Again, I would like to encourage the mayor and the council president, the council members to support ordinance eleven eighty-one to help fund the Susquehanna Hose Company to continue the work that we try to do. We do it twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. We've never missed a call. We have the highest response rate in the state, highest I S O rating in, in the state of Maryland. And it's all because of funding that we receive from the mayor, from the city of Havertide Grace and Harford County Government. And we would like to keep that long tradition continuing. That's basically all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Just to reiterate what Jerry said, thanks for all your support. Mr. Smith, in regards to the water question, I can assure you this council and the mayor and his staff is gonna keep me up to date on what's going on. And I can assure you, there are plans for, for some things going on with the water system. Ms. Parsons, thank you for your comments. Really appreciate it.
Any questions for the chief or the president? You know, I do want to say one thing, though. It's like, I, I've always said this to my citizens, and then somebody challenged me to do it the other day. I've always said you guys are the fastest in the nation, but then I learned if you actually Google...
I just learned that last week.
Yeah. If you actually Google, what is the fastest fire department in the nation, it'll say Susquehanna Hose Company, from Pennsylvania, right? Or, or like, but then it says like, but then it describes Havertide Grace. It got like the wrong state, but the right town and the right company or something. Something weird like that. But anyway, it's you guys. I mean, it's amazing. Like, you can Google anywhere in the world, you can Google a question, the fastest fire department in the United States, and it's our men and women. So that's, that's pretty awesome.
Is it our apparatus and I S O rating and all that stuff?
Yeah.
I did not know that till last week.
That's way cool. That's way cool. It's pretty impressive. Thank you, gentlemen. It's pretty impressive. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Hope they fix it. No longer says Maryland. Says Maryland. Okay. All right. It's a true story.
Turning them the nickname, "The Fastest Volunteers in the Nation", consistently respond within seven to eight fire apparat-, with seven to eight fire apparatus on each call.
I'd call for Mr. Chris Hedges.
Good evening, sir, and welcome to the meeting. May we please have your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name's Chris Hedges. The address is 1372 St. Francis Road, Bel Air, Maryland. But I wrote down the address for the school, because I'm actually here to speak for the school. First, I want to say thank you for everything you guys have ever done for the school and for us, I mean, just helping us with our green schools, things that we just got off the ground and giving us supplies and things like that. I do have a request. Our school has been doing houses, it's kind of like Harry Potter where we have like six different houses and we're all different colors and every year we have a different winner at the end of the year. And we were just curious if it would be possible at some point towards the end of the school year to light the lighthouse, the color of the winning house. And you know, that's probably not a decision that could be made tonight, but it was just something that we would like to like propose to you. The simple rainbow colors, I don't know if it's possible at all, and it would just be one color and just for a couple of days, just think it'd be fun for the kids, for the community, and that's it. So.
Would you have a specific date or date range in mind?
Yeah, so our house reveal for our school is June 11th, and we are actually going to shut down the points going in to decide the winner on May 30th. So we would know who the winner is on May 30th. Right now, it's my house, which is the orange house, which would be pretty awesome if I won, but that's fine.
My son was, my son was red house.
Yeah, no, yeah, cool, yeah. So, yeah.
All right, well, thank you, Ms. Parsons. Appreciate it. My last pre-filled out form is Ms. Carrie Parsons. Welcome back, Ms. Parsons.
Thank you, sir. Carrie Parsons, Atsigo Street here in Havertie Grace. Thank you for this moment again, Council President, Council Members Mayor, fellow citizens here and at home. I appreciate Stephanie Noy and her foresight to the improvement of our shoreline throughout the city, and I'll be discussing the Budget Amendment 2025-09, Living Shoreline. However, I have a few concerns regarding the portion of this living shoreline that is on what appears to be private property, or there is a for sale billboard. For your awareness, I was unable to find an active MLS listing, so the information that I am providing is from an inactive MLS listing or it's from other public sources of information. During my research, it appears four parcels of property had been the point of discussion between the city, the county, and others prior to 2013. In 2016, Ordinance 984 was introduced. There were subsequent hearings which resulted in a special election on December 27th, 2016, with the approval to enter into a procurement with Hartford County for three parcels of property on Water Street. The three properties, parcels of properties identified in Ordinance 984 are recorded as debt accordingly as being owned by the city of Havertie Grace. However, MAP 0601 parcel 0463 is a 1.5 acre lot owned by a private LLC. Again, as I stated, the last MLS listing price that I was able to locate on this property was listed in 2014 for $2.7 million. I'm hoping that there is an agreement somewhere, but the perception is, is that we have, the city, the citizens, approved a cleanup of a contaminated 1.5 acre lot of a private LLC under the guise of this million dollar plus grant from the National Wildlife. I am hoping to be able to hear further discussion or explanation later in this council meeting. Sir, this is the ordinance in my original part of my research. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the pre-filled out forms that I have. Please raise your hand to recognize if you wish to address the council. Yes, sir. Good evening and welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor, Council Members, Senior Staff. My name is Chip Place, 301 Cigar Loop.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to talk a minute about the Comprehensive Plan. First, I'm grateful that you all are taking up the Comprehensive Plan tonight and urge you to adopt the Comprehensive Plan. I'd like to offer a couple of suggestions regarding your recommendations. And by the way, I'd mentioned previously, it would have been, I think it would have been helpful if both the planning commission and City Council had a chance to sit together and go through the recommendations that Council has mentioned. But in particular, I would hope you'd keep a little bit more of an open mind regarding potential higher density housing east of Route 40. The master plan points out that 45% of the renters in Havertie Grace pay more than 30% of their income on rent. That means those folks are rent burdened under federal and state guidelines and also indicates that there's a lack of rental housing overall in Havertie Grace. And where's a good place to put that? That is on the east side of Route 40 where we have infrastructure in place, we have sewer and water, we have bus lines, we have shopping, we have an elementary school, we have the senior and middle school right here. That is a logical place to put in multifamily housing. And I also recommend that you be proactive in considering certain underutilized sites. We went through the exercise on the hospital site, the farm-based zoning. I think that got a little bit overwrought, but it was definitely a good exercise to be proactive in determining exactly what that site should be, even in light of potential mandates from the state that could require density bonuses there. It's good to be out front of those issues. We have the tranquility sites, we have the Ebonics site now that's come into play. So I think it's very important for the city to be proactive in those. And I will mention the parking too, because as you look to perhaps implement multifamily housing, rental housing, parking is one of the main impediments to creating affordable housing. And certainly, we don't need three parking spaces per unit if, say, we're putting in one-bedroom apartments. So I think that's something that council might keep an open mind on too. Thank you very much, unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you, sir. The floor is open. Please raise your hand if you wish to speak. Yes, ma'am. Welcome back.
Thank you. I just want to say, most of you know that I just started with the Susquehanna Ministerium late 2023, early 24. Yesterday, I had the honor and the privilege of attending the Blessings by the Bay. In spite of the weather, it was still phenomenal as far as I'm concerned. And I brought some people with me from other places in Delaware and places like that, and they really enjoyed it. So whoever idea it was to have that, I just want to say thank you, because I really did enjoy it, in spite of the weather.
Well, thanks for reporting back on that. It's usually something I love to attend. I had to attend my, one of my son's last soccer games ever out in Germantown, but I would have been there, but it was a good crowd?
It was pretty good, considering. Yes, it was.
Good. Well, thank you very much. It's been going on for, I don't know who started it, but it's been going on for a while now. It's something everybody looks forward to.
Pastor Open Chain?
Pastor Open Chain? I don't know if he started it or not. It's been going on for a while. I remember like, like 15 years ago, getting my motorcycle blessed or something like, it was like, it's been going on for a while and I almost won't ride my motorcycle if it doesn't get blessed. But anyway, it's a, it's a really, really, really nice thing. I'll have to look into who started it. Ed Height? How long do you think, Jimmy?
I thought they did say since.
I'm not a good measure of time.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's been a very, very long time, like...
Last week, and then it was like, wow, it was two years ago.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's had to be a couple decades, a couple decades. Thank you. Ed Height. There's a good name I haven't heard in a while, Ed Height. Okay. Floor is open. Sir?
Go to the city. Kirk Smith, Atsigo Street. As all of you know up on council, I am a gardener, I'm a fruit picker when the fruit allows me to, and I am a forager. I love going out foraging in our city, and right now, we are at the peak of Morale Mushroom season. You should be out there. If you don't know where, I'm probably not going to tell you, I'll just tell you the woods. But inside the voting districts of Havertie Grace, you can literally find the best tasting mushrooms probably in the world. I think they beat truffles. Of course, truffles are really expensive, so, yeah. So Morale Mushrooms, that'll end in about nine more days, tops. They started a little bit late, but we're getting some decent rain, so get your good shoes out and head on out to the woods, stay on the paths if you don't know what you're doing, and if you find anything that looks like a Morale Mushroom, they should be sliced in the middle. They're hollow. If you're not sure, call me, I'll come take them off your hands and we'll figure it out together. Go to the city. Sweet potato slips can go in if you're a gardener, that's a good thing. Sweet potatoes, pound for pound, provide you with more nutrients and nutrition than just about anything else, and you can grow them in the tiniest of containers. Pumpkins are growing, Mayor, they're about this big. I'll bring you a couple in case it doesn't work out.
Thank you.
That's for the good of the city. Questions? You know where to find me, we're all friends on Facebook and, yeah. Once again, the paths are yours to wander, chief. Planning, economics, financial, DPW probably, only because I have some things going on there that DPW might go, "We don't want to know about." Not illegal things, just things. Questions?
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the council? Any comments from the council members? Okay, we're going to move on to item number seven. We have appointments this evening to several city commissions. Most are new appointments, one is a reapportment. Council President, would you want to do these as a consent calendar?
In light of all the legislation we have tonight, that would be very good if we could.
All right, what I'll do is I will go to each liaison just to move, to appoint these names, and I'll just go down the list, so we'll start with Councilmember Jones for the Arts Commission. Your two applicants are?
Yes, I move to appoint Jennifer Joseph and Laura Numson to the Arts Commission.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jones. Councilmember Robertson?
I move to appoint Pace Putlin and Sabrina Zanino to the Economic Development Advisory Board.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Robertson. And Councilmember Boger?
I move to reappoint Mr. Dan Wunich to the Chair of the Water and Sewer Commission.
Thank you, Councilmember Boger. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I second all motions.
All right, second all motions. Fair enough. Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Jones, Robertson, Boger, seconded by the Council President. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to appoint Jennifer Joseph and Laura Numson to the Arts Commission is approved. Motion to appoint Pace Putlin and Sabrina Zanino to the Economic Development Advisory Board is approved, and the reapportment, Mr. Dan Wunich to Water and Sewer Commission is approved, six zero and affirmative. Thank you. Okay, number eight is an oath of office for a brand new, awesome police officer for our police force. And what I like to do is I'd like to ask the Council President, and I'd like to ask Councilmember Boyer, who's liaison in Public Safety Committee, I'd like to ask the chief to join me in a while.
Hey, congratulations. Stand over here real quick. First thing I want to have you do is, well, chief, step up real quick. So if you just, real quick, tell us a little bit about Ryan, and then I'll hand the microphone to Ryan too.
All right. So Ryan started with us in September, and he was with us a few weeks, and he brings a very unique story. He was a visitor to the police department and he was actually presenting an award to Major Alton, and for all of this good work that he did with the Special Olympics, Maryland. So Ryan is trained as a financial advisor, and he owned his own company and worked for a company. And so that company, they went around and they were awarding first responders that did good deeds in their community, and so rightfully so, Joe won that award, and Ryan was the one that came up with this idea. So anybody that comes to the Havertie Grace Police Department that we think is a good candidate, we start a conversation, and that's how it all started. And so Ryan comes from a background that is, his father is a police officer, and it just started with a conversation, and the next thing you know, he's got an application, going through testing and doing that. And so started with Baltimore Police Academy, September. So, so he started in September and then just graduated April 25th. So did a great job, he was valedictorian of his class. Yeah. And so they tried to steal him from us, I'm not going to, you know. He was true, true to Havertie Grace, so we're very pleased. He just started on field training, he's riding with PFC Clark right now, so she's keeping him straight, and he's learning a lot every day, and I know that'll continue.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much, chief, for the background. And Officer Benkin, please tell us real quickly, you know, tell us a little bit about yourself, what motive you'd be a police officer, and tell us about your experience so far with the academy and now being with the department.
Sure. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Officer Ryan Benkin, my wife and two kids are here in the back. You know, they sacrificed probably the most over the last 33 weeks of the academy, taking on a lot that I just couldn't do, so, I mean, thank you to them. So my dad is, as the chief said, retired from New York NYPD as a detective, I think he's retired now in total 25 years, but so, growing up in law enforcement was always just a part of me, and, you know, it was just always in the back of my head to do something like this, and it really was just an offhand conversation in presenting Major Alton that, that award. I think at this point now, we're talking close to two years ago, and it really was something along the lines of, and it was Chief Walters at the time who said, you know, "You could do both." And I thought, "Oh, I can do this part-time?" She said, "No, no, no. You can do the financial planning part-time and do this full-time." And I had an hour ride home, and I really thought about it the entire time, and maybe a few months later, I met with Dan Pets over coffee here in town, and just to bend his ear a little bit, and I think it was a week later where I was here taking the agility test and the written test. And that was January of '24. So, you know, it's been quite the process, but I represented Havertie Grace completely and on my own down there, and like the chief said, you know, came out as valedictorian. I'm 42, and so there was no way I was going to let some of those young kids beat me out, and so, thank you.
Well, thank you very much for just giving us the background there, and like I say, we're very excited to have you here. I remember when the chief and Major Alton came in and told me about beating you and how this all came about, and I thought that was the coolest thing, so here we are. I mean, and congratulations on the successful trip through the academy. So I'd be honored if you actually have your family join us up here while you take the oath, if you wouldn't mind. Come on up here. How's everybody doing? All right, it's a school night, we're hanging out with mom and dad. Officer Benkin, I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I'm going to say the word "I". When I say the word "I", also repeat the word "I", but also say your name too. "I"?
Aye, Ryan Benkin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will fulfill.
That I will fulfill.
The requirement.
Requirement.
Of the office I'm about to assume.
Of the office I am about to assume.
That I'll support the Constitution- That I'll support the Constitution of the United States?
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll be faithful?
That I'll be faithful.
And bear true allegiance?
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution?
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof?
And laws thereof.
And I will faithfully and impartially?
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Without fear of favor or prejudice?
Without fear of favor or prejudice.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
As police officer?
As police officer.
City of Havre de Grace?
City of Havre de Grace.
At the best of my abilities?
At the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
One, two, three.
Big smiles, big smiles.
One, two, three.
Sorry.
Thought they'd be presenting it. I guess not. Okay, we're going to go to item 19. Recognitions, we have none. Proclamations, we have none. Presentations, we have none. Oh, this is going to be a quick meeting.
Hey.
Resolutions. We do have one calendar resolution, and I'm going to hand that off to the Council President.
Mr. Mayor, Council, citizens all, I move to introduce calendar resolution concerning approving a memorandum of understanding with the Arts Collective for the management and promotion of the Arts and Entertainment District.
Council, I have a motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Robertson. This is a motion to introduce a calendar resolution. Questions or comments on the introduction of this resolution? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. This resolution is introduced six zero and affirmative. This is going to be calendar resolution 2025-07, 2025-07. A resolution by the Mayor and City Council of Havre de Grace, Maryland, pursuant to the local government article of the Annotated Code of Maryland in Sections 33 and 34 of the City Charter, to approve a memorandum of understanding between the City of Havre de Grace and the Havre de Grace Arts Collective. Council would have a motion to adopt calendar resolution 2025-7.
So moved.
Second.
The motion by Councilmember Booger, seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. Questions or comments? Council President?
Mr. Mayor, Council, this is for a reestablishment of the MOU that we first established in 2017 for the operation and management, shared management of the Cultural Center at the Opera House and now the Arts and Entertainment District. So, it's just an MOU between the two groups.
Thank you very much, Council President. Any other questions or comments? Council, we're going to do a roll call vote on calendar resolution 2025-07. Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Councilmember Booger?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas?
Yes.
Council President? A roll call vote of six zero and affirmative. Calendar resolution 2025-07 is approved and adopted. We're going to go to item 13, ordinances. We're going to start with the ordinance 1181, concerning establishing a method of funding for the Susquehanna Host Company, second reading. And we'll hand that, motion off to the Council President.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I move to introduce ordinance number 1181 concerning establishing a method of funding for the Susquehanna Host Company for second reading and adoption.
Council, I have a motion by the Council President. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Booger. I have a motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Booger. This is a motion to introduce ordinance 1181 on second reading. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to introduce ordinance 1181 on second reading carries six zero and affirmative. An ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Havre de Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the local government article of the Annotated Code of Maryland and Sections 33 and 34 of the Havre de Grace City Charter to establish the method by which annual contributions will be calculated for budget purposes for the Susquehanna Host Company. Council would have a motion to adopt 1181 on second reading.
And moved. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Boyer, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Questions or comments? Council President?
So, you've heard the accolades about how wonderful these men and women are and how much they protect our city. Once again, we're reestablishing the new rate, 3.6 sets per $100 for the net accessible tax base for the real property. And I'll bring them up to approximately $710,500 per year. We say well deserved.
Thank you, Council President. Any other questions or comments? Council, we're going to do a roll call vote. Roll call vote on 1181, second reading. Councilmember Booger?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas?
Yes.
Council President Ringsucker?
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson? By a roll call vote of six zero and the affirmative, ordinance 1181 concerning establishing a method of funding for the Susquehanna Host Company is adopted and approved. Six zero and affirmative. Thank you, Council.
Now you can go home, go to bed.
The storms are coming.
Flooded basements.
Notice how the whole fire company's here. I haven't heard the alarm go off once.
The sire's not working right now. Coming back soon, I promise you that.
Thank you, Council. Item B, ordinance number 1182 concerning amendment chapter 173. Councilmember Shenegas?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I move to introduce ordinance number 1182 concerning amending chapter 173 subdivision regulations relating to waivers in the second reading.
Council, I have a motion by Councilmember Shenegas. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by the Council President. This is a motion to introduce 1182 on second reading. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Ordinance 1182, an ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Havre de Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the local government article of the Annotated Code of Maryland and Sections 33 and 34 of the Havre de Grace City Charter to amend 173 subdivision regulations. Council would have a motion to adopt 1182 on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Questions or comments? Councilmember Shenegas?
This amendment will allow the Director of Planning and may, after consultation with the Director of Public Works, administratively review proposed subdivisions and waive the requirements of this chapter for any subdivision which is needed solely for the relocation of utilities or for the establishment or expansion of public rights of way involving roads, utilities, or railway transportation.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Shenegas. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Boyer?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to delete the word utilities on line 46.
It's right here. Where is it at? Line 46. Council, I have a motion by Councilmember Boyer to delete the word utilities on line 46. Is there a second for that? Seconded by Councilmember Robertson. Questions or comments?
Just comment on that. This recommendation comes from our legal counsel, and it's to limit the extent and expansion to roads and railways, not utilities. And I'll let her comment more on it.
Yeah, a citizen came and asserted that it could be, the changes proposed could be interpreted to allow a utility company to come in and propose the establishment or expansion of utilities without further review. So, to clarify, if it's merely relocation related to events beyond the city's control, like what's going on with the Amtrak expansion, that could be administratively done. Or if there are roads or railway rights of way that require some subdivision. For example, the Amtrak is expanding or needing some additional rights of way that will require a city parcel to go into two parcels. So, that could be administratively reviewed. But I did not want to include utilities there because it wasn't intended to apply that broadly on the establishment or expansion part. If that makes sense.
Thank you. Are you still?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Any questions on this? Are we good?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay, so, we do have an amendment to this by Councilmember Boyer, seconded by Councilmember Robertson. If I have any further questions, this is a vote on the amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Councilmember Boyer's amendment carries six zero and affirmative. Thank you very much, Councilmember Boyer. Thank you, Ms. Ishak. We're back under the question for ordinance 1182, which had a motion to adopt by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further questions or comments? Roll call vote, Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas?
Yes.
Council President Ringsucker?
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Councilmember Booger?
Yes.
By a roll call vote of six zero and affirmative, ordinance 1182 is adopted on second reading. Item C, ordinance 1183, Councilmember Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to introduce ordinance 1183 concerning amending chapter 198, water and sewer relating to grease oil and interceptors in the second reading.
Council, I have a motion by Councilmember Jones. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. This is a motion to introduce 1183 on second reading. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to introduce 1183 on second reading carries six zero and affirmative. It's an ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Havre de Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the local government article of the Annotated Code of Maryland and Sections 33 and 34 of the Havre de Grace City Charter to amend chapter 198, water and sewer. Council would have a motion to adopt 1183 on second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Booger. Questions or comments? Yes.
So, just a reminder for folks that our current practice is if homeowners or businesses don't install grease traps, the city will do it and will request reimbursement. And without these grease traps, we have wear and tear on our city pipes. So, unfortunately, the way that we do it now, it's not enforceable. So, that's why we're putting this into the code so that we can make it official, and it's just not a common practice that we do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jones. Any other questions or comments? Roll call vote on ordinance 1183, second reading. Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Councilmember Booger?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones? Excuse me. By a roll call vote of six zero and affirmative, ordinance 1183 is adopted on second reading. Okay, we are going to go to item D, ordinance 1184. And that's our fourth ordinance, final ordinance of the evening for second reader. And I'll hand it off to Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, I move to introduce on second reading budget amendment 2025-08.
Second.
Council, I have a motion by Councilmember Robertson, seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. This is ordinance 1184, introduction on second reading. Questions or comments on the introduction of 1184? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. 1184 is approved to be introduced on second reading, six zero and affirmative. This is an ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Havre de Grace by the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the local government article of the Annotated Code of Maryland and section 37 of the Havre de Grace City Charter for the purpose of amending the city budget for fiscal year 2025 to address the reallocations of funds for the City of Havre de Grace for fiscal year 2025. Council would have a motion to adopt ordinance 1184 on second reading.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by the Council President. Questions or comments? Councilmember Robertson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder for those folks, the viewing public, this is to receive $10,000 in donations. Give that money a home in the revenue side, and then give that money a purpose on the expenditure side. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much, Councilmember Robertson. Do I have any other questions or comments? Okay, we're going to do a roll call vote on 1184, second reading. Councilmember Shenegas?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Councilmember Booger?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
By a roll call vote of six zero and affirmative, ordinance 1184 concerning approving a budget amendment 2025-08 is approved and adopted. We have four more ordinances, and we also have a comprehensive plan to vote on. And I've received a couple of notes under the desk up here saying, "Can we take a quick bathroom break before we delve into that?" So, guys, might I have a five-minute bathroom break? We're going to take a recess for five minutes, okay? Thank you very much, everybody.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna start the council meeting. The time is now eight eleven and we are resuming our council meeting for May the fifth, two thousand twenty-five. We took a quick recess. And now we're back to the ordinances, and we're gonna go to ordinance E. And I'll hand that to Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, I move to introduce on first reading budget amendment two thousand twenty-five dash zero nine.
Council, I have a motion by Councilmember Robertson to have a second.
Second.
Second by Council President. This is a motion to introduce ordinance. I'm sorry, this is a first reader. This is a motion to introduce an ordinance to approve budget amendment two thousand twenty-five dash zero nine. Any questions on the introduction of this ordinance? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Motion to introduce ordinance carries six zero and affirmative. Council, this will be known as ordinance eleven eighty-six, one one eight six. An ordinance by the mayor and city council of Haverty Grace by the authority of Article eleven E of the Maryland Constitution, the local government article, the annotated code of Maryland, and section thirty-seven of the Haverty Grace City Charter for the purpose of amending the city budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five to address the receipt and allocations of grant money for the city of Haverty Grace for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five. Council, do I have a motion to adopt eleven eighty-six on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Council President, second by Councilmember Robertson. Questions or comments? Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, for the pleasure of the viewing audience, this is a budget amendment to receive federal grant funding for the purposes of the living shoreline. So it's increasing the revenue portion for federal grants and also increasing in the same amount, two point three million dollars for the expenditure side.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Robertson. Any other questions or comments? Council, we're gonna do a roll call vote on eleven eighty-six. Council President.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Booker.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas.
Yes.
By roll call vote of six zero and affirmative, city council ordinance eleven eighty-six is adopted on first reading. And Council President, a public hearing at the next council meeting, May nineteenth?
On the nineteenth.
Okay. Ordinance eleven eighty-six will have its public hearing at the next council meeting, May nineteenth, at seven o'clock preceding the next council meeting. Item F, ordinance concerning approving budget amendment two thousand twenty-five dash ten. Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, I am moved to introduce on first reading budget amendment two thousand twenty-five dash one zero.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Robertson and second by Councilmember Booker. This is a motion to introduce an ordinance on first reading. Any questions on the introduction of this ordinance? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to introduce an ordinance carries six zero and affirmative. Council, this will be ordinance eleven eighty-seven, one one eight seven. An ordinance by the mayor and city council of Haverty Grace by the authority of Article eleven E of the Maryland Constitution, the local government article of the annotated code of Maryland and section thirty-seven of the Haverty Grace City Charter for the purpose of amending city budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five to address the reallocations of funds in Fund Nine for the city of Haverty Grace for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five. Council, do I have a motion to adopt eleven eighty-seven on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, second by Councilmember Booker. Questions or comments? Roll call vote on eleven eighty-seven. Councilmember Robertson.
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Booker.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas.
Yes.
Council President.
Yep.
A roll call vote of six zero and affirmative. Ordinance eleven eighty-seven is adopted on first reading and Council President, is May nineteenth, also good for a public hearing?
Perfectly fine.
Okay, ordinance eleven eighty-seven will have its public hearing at the next council meeting scheduled May nineteenth at seven o'clock, right after the public hearing on eleven eighty-six. Item G, and we're gonna head back to Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, I move to introduce an ordinance concerning establishing the city's tax rate for FY two thousand twenty-six.
Council, I have a motion by Councilmember Robertson to have a second.
Second.
Second by Council President. This is a motion to introduce an ordinance concerning establishing the city's tax rate for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six. Any questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Motion to introduce at the ordinance carries six zero and affirmatives. And Council, this will be known as ordinance eleven eighty-eight, one one eight eight. The ordinance by the mayor and city council of Haverty Grace, Maryland pursuant to the authority provided by the annotated code of Maryland tax, Maryland tax property article title six and the local government article, the annotated code of Maryland fixing the tax rate for fiscal year July one, two thousand twenty-five to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six on each one hundred dollars of assessable real property, personal property, and providing an additional special tax levy to within a critical area of special taxing district and setting the service charge for the semi-annual property tax payment option. Council, do I have a motion to approve ordinance eleven eighty-eight on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Robertson and second by Councilmember Shenegas. Questions or comments? Okay, we're gonna roll call vote. But I do have one comment. The tax rate is the same as last year, so in case you're out there wondering. Tax rate hasn't changed, it's the same tax rate. We just had to establish it every year by ordinance, okay. All right, Councilmember Booker, how say ye?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas.
Yes.
Council President ringside.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
By roll call vote of six zero and affirmative, city council ordinance eleven eighty-eight concerning establishing the city's tax rate is approved. Now, Council President, by charter, we have to adopt this by the next city council meeting, so.
We can do this, we can do the public hearing and the second reading same night?
What we're gonna do is we're gonna have a public hearing next Monday.
That's right, that's right.
Uh, so there's gonna be a, a public hearing here at City Hall, May twelfth, next Monday, week from the night, at six o'clock in the evening. And that public hearing will be anyone who wishes to come to speak on ordinance eleven eighty-eight, which is the city's tax rate.
Got you, we're off the hook.
Yeah, I was, you know, I thought just one half a meeting left to go, y'all are adding stuff in here.
Blood in, blood out, right?
Yeah, man, I mean, this, what, this is all about, by the way, is at Aloha, um, tonight. Some of my fellow council members and, and the mayor, uh, we just thought we'd have a little fun with it.
I think you're on to something here.
Okay, um, okay, we're gonna go to item H. And item H is establishing the city's water and sewer rates. Councilmember Booker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I move to introduce on the first reading an ordinance concerning the establishment of the city's water and sewer rates for FY two thousand twenty-six.
Second.
Council, I have a motion by Councilmember Booker and second by Councilmember Shenegas. This is a motion to introduce the city's water and sewer rate. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to introduce the ordinance carries six zero and affirmative. This will be known as ordinance eleven eighty-nine, one one eight nine. This is a ordinance by the mayor and city council of Haverty Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article eleven E of the Maryland Constitution, the local government article of the annotated code of Maryland, sections thirty-three and thirty-four, of the Haverty Grace City Charter, City Code, chapter one ninety-six, and exhibit A thereto establishing the city water and sewer rates and service participation fees for the users of the city water and sewer system. Council, do I have a motion to adopt eleven eighty-nine on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, second by Councilmember Booker. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I'll go ahead. Just, just a reminder to the, uh, to, to the viewing, uh, audience here, so the Water and Sewer Commission had recommended on, on February eighteenth to, uh, to the, uh, to the directors and to the council and, and to the mayor to actually increase the, just the freshwater rate and not the sewer rate. So the actual freshwater rate is gonna increase, um, and that'll be effective on one July. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Council, we're gonna vote on eleven eighty-nine, first reading. Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Booker.
Yes.
A roll call vote of six zero and affirmative, ordinance eleven eighty-nine is approved on first reading. And also, just like the tax ordinance, we have to have this water and sewer rate ordinance, um, adopted by the next city council meeting. So we're gonna also tack this public hearing on to next Monday, May twelfth's, uh, public hearing. So, next Monday, May twelfth, here at City Hall, it won't be a council meeting, it'll be just a meeting on a public hearing at six o'clock at night on ordinance eleven eighty-eight, which is the tax rate, and ordinance eleven eighty-nine, which is the water and sewer rate. That's what it is. That way, it'll be prepared, we'll be prepared to vote on and/or amend, if necessary, anything on those two ordinances on the May nineteenth meeting. Okay, item fourteen, old business. Dr. Ritchie.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, the Relay for Life has requested two amendments to their event that is going to be held on September thirteenth. The first amendment is they're requesting to be able to set up a forty by forty tent the day before on the twelfth. And the second amendment is to advance their setup time to ten AM instead of noon on the thirteenth. Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Boyer, second by Councilmember Shenegas. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Amendment to relay for life event applications approved six zero and affirmative. Thank you, Council. Item B, old business. Councilmember Shenegas.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I move to reintroduce calendar resolution two thousand twenty-five zero one concerning approving and adopting the two thousand twenty-four envisioned Haverty Grace Comprehensive Plan.
Council, I have a motion by Councilmember Shenegas and it's second by the Council President. It's a motion, um, motion to adopt the Haverty Grace Comprehensive Plan, questions or comments? What? Any questions or comments?
Mayor, I make a motion, um, to accept the following amendments as a calendar consent, a consent calendar. And they are as distributed amendment one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, skipping fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. And on the second smaller packet, provided, um, amendments number one, two, three, four, five, as a packet.
So, just to clarify, didn't you want to pull that one?
That one, the top one.
Cause the way it's numbered, it says amendment, that would be the first amendment, and then additional amendment, number one.
Not including, I'm gonna need to do amendment calendar resolution twenty-five dash one separately.
I second those, uh.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Can you say it, please say it one more time for me, I didn't hear you.
I make a motion to.
Do a consent calendar.
Consent calendar for items provided to you, amendment one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, skipping fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and then the second document provided. Additional amendment to the Comprehensive Plan number one, two, three, four, five. And that's as a packet.
Not that one.
Which one?
So, not that one. Not. Fifteen. Not that one, and then not, uh, not this one. She wants to do this separately.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Boyer, do I have a second?
Second.
Council President seconds it. Questions or comments?
So let me just give you an overview of what I just said. So, um, distributed with, um, the packet for tonight was a document, um, that had a number of recommendations made as a result of our public, um, the public meeting that we had, the work session that we had, and subsequent meetings trying to make changes to the Comprehensive Plan in order to make it, you know, just the tweaks that we thought that were important. So things that were included, um, was to strike the comment in regards to parking requirements, making it so there's only one parking space per bedroom standard. And other things in regards to parking, um, taking out the reference to, um, the potential RO zoning district for Hartford Memorial. That is another big, um, taking out the comments in regards to tranquility homes and adding in information about us being a bird city. Adding in to it, um, comments in regards to aging in place. And adopting, defining what complete streets are, removing hyperlinks. And the reason why we're moving the hyperlinks is because we're finding that a lot of the federal links that we had are no longer working. And in there as well, it's just doing changes just because of the timing of things. Calling it instead of the two thousand twenty-four envisioned Harvard, um, Haverty Grace Comprehensive Plan, changing it to two thousand twenty-five. Updating the director, now that we have a new director. Identifying what town is, and also including there, recognizing that we have a number of second homes and starting to address that. So it's, it's a mishmash of things that were all discussed at those public sessions. And we found a way to include all of them. Separate from that, um, I struck out amendment number fifteen, and I'll talk about that in a next motion. And, um, we have a repeal and replace for the transportation. One of the things that was discussed at length was in regards to Haverty Grace being a walkable city, and that was really, if somebody was to define like what Haverty Grace is, it's a walkable city, and that that should be at the forefront of this, um, plan. And lessening the discussion, not withdrawing the discussion at all, but just lessening the discussion about bikability. So that'll be coming up at another amendment. So that's an explanation amendment. Does anybody have any questions about the content? Nope, okay, sir.
You know, I don't have any question, I, I just have a, a comment. This is, this is, this is a huge effort on your part, Councilmember, uh, Boyer, and I, I for one appreciate that. I, especially the amendment number seventeen where the aging in place and how that's going to correlate with the, with the permit fees, you know? Can't really age in place if, um, if, if my fees are doubling and so forth, right? So, uh, thank you. I appreciate the effort.
All things that we can do to promote, um, and, you know, this is the foundation piece, and I just wanted also to take this opportunity just a foot stomp real quick and say that Diane Claire in the back has done yeoman's job on this and has nursed this from the beginning to end. It's a very large, comprehensive document, and she has set us off in a good path for the future, so, thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Okay, uh, there's no further questions, and we have an amendment by Councilmember Boyer, uh, second by the Council President. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Councilmember Boyer's, uh, amendments carry six zero and affirmative. Councilmember Boyer.
Mayor, for, um, just for, uh, uh, put it out there for business, one of the things that we discussed as a, um, as a council was including into the Comprehensive Plan, the discussion about the Mark Station. We made comment that, you know, that's far-fetched, it's probably not gonna happen, and would be kinda silly to keep it in there, just take it out. So that's the comments that we had. But after discussion with Diane and others, Diane let me know that when this document was presented to the state of Maryland, the Department of Planning made the recommendation to include in our document, um, about the Mark Station, um, in Haverty Grace. So that's why Diane added it, and because of that, I did not include that in the, um, the amendments. I just wanna make you all aware of it and make sure everybody's okay, if anybody would like to offer that and, um, striking that, um, we can move forward. Otherwise, I'm gonna take a pause and just get your feedback. Okay, so I'm not gonna do that one. So going on, um, the next amendment I'd like to offer is to remove all references to the two thousand twenty-four envisioned Haverty Grace Comprehensive Plan and replace it with the two thousand twenty-five envisioned Haverty Grace Comprehensive Plan. And this is an amendment to the calendar resolution.
Second.
Let me restate it, this is an amendment to the calendar resolution twenty-five dash one. Remove all references to the two thousand twenty-four envisioned Haverty Grace Comprehensive Plan and replace with the two thousand twenty-five envisioned Haverty Grace Comprehensive Plan.
I have a motion by Councilmember Boyer, second by Councilmember Robertson. Question or comments on the amendment?
It's just administrative in nature.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Six zero and affirmative, Councilmember Boyer's amendments are carried.
Mayor, I have one final amendment, and it is, um, to the Comprehensive Plan to repeal and replace chapter eleven. You all, um, just, let me just put that, my motion is to repeal and replace chapter eleven.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Boyer, and her motion is seconded by the Council President. Question or comments?
I'm sorry, can you, um, explain to me exactly what that means? Are, are you saying that you're adding all of this in there?
So, distributed to you all was a document that looks this on the front page. Because we had so many changes to chapter eleven in regards to transportation, we, instead of going online, there's so-and-so, we're gonna change this, line so-and-so, change this. We thought it would just be a lot easier to do a repeal and replace.
So we don't have anything to replace it with yet?
This is the replacement.
This is the replacement.
Yes. What you have in your hand is the replacement. What the changes are, are, um, is first noted, they're noted in the highlights that you see. So on page two, we switched, um, the order, putting sidewalks ahead of bikeways. On page eight, we added a paragraph to explain what we mean by active transportation, meaning that it's, um, it's, um, I gotta get the right terminology, cause Diane's gonna hit me over my fingers. I'm just using open access for all, multi, moat? Shared use, multimodal transportation, meaning walking, um, biking, scooters, or anything on the same path. And then the final thing that, um, what, the next thing that we did is we switched sidewalks. Before it was in the listing as things were ordered, we had biking first and then sidewalks. So we switched the order of things to put sidewalks before biking and took several of the pieces that were in the biking section and put it in the walking section. Because really, as it was originally written, it was really meant to be both of them together. Um, and just by probably alphabetical, biking became before walking, and that's how it happened that way. So we're just switching things around. Everything is still the same as far as content, it's just in a different order.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Any further questions? We are still under amendment by Councilmember Boyer, second by the Council President. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Councilmember Boyer's amendment carries six zero and affirmative.
Thank you.
Councilmember Boyer, any further questions or comments or amendments?
That is the end of it, I appreciate all your time.
Okay. We're back to item B, uh, the calendar resolution two thousand twenty-five dash zero one, the comprehen, envisioned Haverty Grace Comprehensive Plan. Any further questions or comments before a roll call vote? Okay. Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Booker.
Yes.
A roll call vote of six zero and affirmative, counter resolution two thousand twenty-five dash zero one. The envisioned Haverty Grace Comprehensive Plan adopted by council. Thank you. Okay. Item fifteen, new business. Dr. Ritchie.
Mayor, Council, for your consideration, this evening we have two special events. First is the Haverty Grace High School Music Boosters five K on May tenth, from eight AM to eleven AM at Tidings Park. And the two hundred and twenty-ninth Maryland National Guard Band Patriotic Summer Concert on July sixth from seven thirty PM to eight thirty PM at Tidings Park. Thank you.
Council, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by the Council President, second by Councilmember Booker. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Haverty Grace High School Music Booster five K run and the two hundred and twenty-ninth Maryland National Guard Band for July, concert for July sixth are both approved, six zero and affirmative. Thank you, Dr. Ritchie, thank you, Council. We're gonna go to item sixteen, Director's Reports, and we're gonna go right back to Dr. Ritchie.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, colleagues, citizens. So I have had a couple of questions, uh, following up on the recognition that we did in November of last year on Lawrence Leroy Butch Ringold. He was the Haverty Grace Police Officer who gave his, his life for his country in the Vietnam War. And out of that recognition. And out of that recognition that we did kind of spurred some greater recognition that the city would like to do for this man. So administration has been working with Councilmember Jones in regards to creating some signage to honor him and to identify the appropriate location of that signage. So I hope to have some more details for everybody in the coming weeks, but that is something that the administration is working on. I do want to thank all of the city employees and the council members for working on the comprehensive plan and getting it to where it is today. It was a tremendous amount of work. It's taken years to get to this point. And I do also want to offer special thanks echoing my colleague Diane Claire and her efforts over there. Thank you, Diane. I also would like to, [applause]. I would also like to recognize my colleague to my left, Adam Rebchinsky, and also Councilmember Boyer. Both of you have done a tremendous amount of work on this as of late and just thank you very much for that dedication. So to our Department of Economic Development Tourism, congratulations on a great first first Friday of the season. I, full disclosure, was unable to attend it. I was at the Orioles game with my father, but all of the feedback that I've received and the pictures that I saw made it sound like it was just a wonderful day and a wonderful event. I know it was a little bit challenging because the construction isn't all completed, but good job. Congratulations on a, on a great first first Friday.[704.82][704.82][applause]. So I was at Defender's Day and that was a whole lot of fun even though the weather forecast didn't cooperate. The weather itself wasn't terrible, but I think the forecast kept people away. But speaking of the weather forecast, I did want to bring this up in my comments. We've been getting a fair amount of questions about why the city canceled the fireworks and, you know, other venues that experience poor weather, they have fireworks, you know, they just wait for the rain to stop and they have them. So I wanted to address that under my comments this evening. It is not something that we take lightly, but the decision has two primary factors in it. So the first one is first and foremost, safety. And then the second one is a monetary consideration. So the fireworks are staged on a hundred and fifty-foot metal barge. And so besides the obvious safety risks with fireworks being on a metal barge, we're concerned about the safety of the people that would be on the barge, but also getting them to the barge, then safely getting them off of the barge. And if the weather that's forecasted obviously has lightning or thunderstorms, that is a concern. But also if it has potentially high winds, anything that would cause the water to be choppy and rough, it is very dangerous in order for them to ingress and egress off the barge safely. So we, we take that under strong consideration. And then also the final decision to cancel the fireworks is actually up to the fire marshal. So the fire marshal can cancel the fireworks at absolutely any time, so well before the event starts to, you know, ten seconds before they would light the first fuse. So if the city, so let's get into the whole monetary side of things. If the city were to decide to roll the dice and then wait to cancel the fireworks, that means we would load the fireworks on the barge, have them inspected by the fire marshal, and then have the barge pushed out by tug and moored out in the water. Once those fireworks are loaded on the barge, the city is obligated to pay the entire price or cost of those fireworks, and they are very expensive. If the city makes their decision to cancel the fireworks before the fireworks go on the barge, we pay a much smaller cancellation fee. So I'll give you a real world example of what we experienced for Defender's Day. So the cancellation fee is four thousand dollars. It's a lot of money. If we were to have loaded the fireworks onto the barge and then when the thunder started and the fire marshal were to have canceled it at that point, we would have had to write a check for twenty-five thousand dollars to the fireworks company. So that's a financial decision that we in administration don't take lightly. It's your tax dollars and at some points it makes a lot more sense to pay the cancellation fee of four thousand dollars than to risk potentially losing twenty-five thousand dollars of taxpayer dollars. So that is the reason why the fireworks were canceled for the Defender's Day, even though we didn't really experience much rain, the winds were subsided by the time the fireworks were, would have been shot. So I hope that provides a little bit of clarification to those here and those people at home that may be confused as to why they were canceled or why we do things like that. And then lastly, there is a municipal election tomorrow, so Tuesday, May sixth, from seven AM to eight PM at the Haverty Grace Star Center Gymnasium at seven hundred Congress Avenue. So there are eight candidates running for three city council seats and we do have five of those candidates currently with us in this room, so it is nice to see you all here with us. So the unofficial results will be announced tomorrow evening after the polls closed and then official results will be available after the canvassing of the absentee ballots and that's scheduled for Thursday morning, the eighth, at ten AM right here in the council chambers. And that concludes my comments for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ritchie, and I do appreciate you explaining the process of the fireworks. I just want to add one thing to that, a couple of things quickly. The reason the city chooses to shoot the fireworks from a barge is it gives the greatest viewing ability from the whole shoreline of Haverty Grace. They used to be shot off from Tidings Islands maybe about up to nine years ago, but you'd have to be right there to get a good view of it. Shooting off from the barge, whether you're by the Lockhouse Museum all the way down to, you know, Tidings Park, you get a good view of the fireworks. But like I say, the risk is it's a steel barge with explosives and potential lightning. And one other thing, that decision has to be made by eleven in the morning. And so every, every year, Dr. Ritchie and I, and you know, we're on the phone with, you know, Coast Guard, we're on the phone with the tugboat captains and fire company, fireworks company, and he's right, once we unload them, we own them. As long as they're in the truck, they take our deposit, but they apply it to the next one. And I also want to say, the reason the fires feel expensive is because we've canceled the last couple fireworks, we canceled New Year's, and so it's usually a twelve thousand dollar show, but because we canceled it, then they, they make the fireworks, actually make these things by hand. They don't order them from, you know, China. They actually, the company in Pennsylvania makes the explosives, the ordinances by hand. And so as long as they don't unload them from their truck, they can keep them there and they're allowed to take them back. If they unload them and they lose, they give up possession, they can't take them back. Even though by law they have to dispose of them, we're not supposed to touch the explosives, but they can't, it's a long story. But, so we had New Year's Eve and Defender's Day fireworks, which was a lot of money. So all I can say is, if the weather's good on Fourth of July, everybody's in for one heck of a fireworks show.[1085.62][1085.62][laughter]. We're, we're really building up our firepower here. So, but yeah, it's, you know, you make the decision and ultimately, you know, we have to make that decision and you look all day and it's like it's sunny and stuff like that. And, you know, we don't secretly hope it's raining just to prove us right. I mean, we, we hope for a nice day, and it was a nice day at Defender's Day. However, it was weird because up where I live on, in Grace Harbor, it rained hard around six o'clock at night and not a drop fell down by the lighthouse. So you just, you know, maybe we're very fortunate to get that off. But, yeah, so I know, I know a lot of people are like, you know, I don't understand because, you know, we go to Ripken Stadium and it rains and then ten minutes later it's still the fireworks because they're land-based fireworks. They can cover them up and shoot them another time. These are water-launched fireworks. We have to load a barge, move the barge out there, and you don't want to put, you know, men and women of fireworks company in position to be in a lightning storm on a steel barge and then, and then have to have, you know, the fire department risk their lives to go out in a hailstorm or lightning storm to get them off. And so like I said, it's, it's the risk we take to shoot fireworks from a barge to give people the most optimum view of the fireworks. So anyway, probably know more than you want to know about fireworks in Havertie Grace, but, you know, next time we cancel, please know, it's never taken lightly. Mr. Goins, our Director of Planning, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, members of the community. I too would like to thank Diane Claire for her work on the comprehensive plan. So thank you very much, Diane. Also, there were two other staff members that contributed significantly to the plan, Eric Lawrence as well as Maury Thackerton. Just like to recognize them as well for their work on that. And I'll just provide an update on the April building permits. So we had three new constructions, three single-family detached all on Silent Hill, eighteen renovations or additions, including decks and screen room permits, and then twenty-six other, which include fences, gazebos, patios, pools, and other ancillary permits. And that's it.
Great. Thank you very much, sir. Any questions for Mr. Goins? Thank you very much. Good evening, Ms. Johnson, Director of Tourism and Economic Development.
Good evening, Mayor, council, citizens in the audience and citizens at home. A couple of updates this evening. One, thank you, council, for approving Sabrina Zanino and Pace Putlin to the Economic Development Advisory Board. Sabrina owns two stores on Franklin Street, Gossip Girls Consignment Shop and Marie and Ray Boutique, and Pace Putlin is the owner of the Old Golds Bakery Building. He is working on capital improvements to the building and he is very interested in attracting a new bakery to that location. So I'm very happy to have both of them on EDAP. I think they will be great additions to the board. Also, I received a couple of nice calls today. Apparently there was a post about a business that's going to be locating at twenty-one twenty-one Pulaski Highway. The owners are, own Jurassic Golf and Arcade in Valer, and many people were asking me why I haven't been talking about this, and there are two reasons. One, that property is located in Harford County. It has a Haverty Grace address, so it is not in part of the city and that is not an annexed property into the city, which means they work through Harford County Government for their planning, their permits for everything. So we kind of ride along with them and we get all the credit. We're happy to have them in Haverty Grace, they simply are not in an annexed property. Thank you very much, Chris, for bringing up First Fridays. I've always have to give a shout out to Lori Orzowitz, our tourism manager. She did a great job. There's a lot of work that goes into First Fridays and it was a challenge with our construction, but it went off pretty well. So we're happy with the outcome and there will probably be some additional changes, excuse me, for June, so we will keep the public up to date on everything that's going on. Also, the renovations are complete at the visitor center. We are planning a grant opening for June sixth, First Fridays. We'll have some new merchandise inside of the store, so we're hoping everyone will stop by. And in addition to that, the walking maps are complete. We had them reprinted last week. The design is different. We provide walking maps to all of the stores that request them and also to the visitors that come inside the visitor center. So those are complete and the destination guides should be complete by mid-May or the beginning of June. Other than that, our First Friday page was launched, launched on Explore Haverty Grace, and we have a second page that should go live in about another week or so, and that's going to be the film and permitting page for all of the interested people who would like to create a movie in the city of Haverty Grace. And that concludes my talking points tonight unless there are any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Johnson? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate the update. And good evening, Mr. Abdi, Director of Finance.
Good evening, Mayor, council, council members, citizens of Haverty Grace. Before I introduce the financial condition for the city, I just want to thank you for the approval of ordinance eleven eighty-four, or I should say budget twenty twenty-five oh eight, the receipt and expenditure of the donation for the police K-9 Miko. Onto the financial condition, starting with the general fund. The fund balance currently stands at three million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, which is down three hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred since my last reporting. Beginning fund balance has not changed and currently stands at two million, three hundred forty-nine thousand, six hundred. Expenditures are up a little over two point six million, currently stands at twenty-four million, six hundred and seventy-one thousand. Expenditures are up a little over two point nine million. Expenditures to date stands at twenty-three million, seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, six hundred. Onto the water sewer fund, the fund balance is up a little over one point four million. The current fund balance stands at six million, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred. Beginning fund balance has not changed and currently stands at one million, seven hundred forty-six thousand, eight hundred. Revenues are up one point nine million and revenues currently stand at seventeen million, eight hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred. Expenditures are up, since my last reporting, five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred. Expenditures to date currently stand at thirteen million, three hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred. Finally, the Marina Fund, Fund Eight, the fund balance is down twelve thousand, four hundred since my last reporting. The fund balance currently stands at one million, forty-one thousand, two hundred. Beginning fund balance has not changed and currently stands at seven hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred. Revenues are up seven thousand, eight hundred and revenues currently stand at seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred. Expenditures are up twenty thousand, two hundred, with total expenditures to date four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred. So that concludes my financial conditions for those three funds. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, sir. Does anybody have a question for the Director of Finance? Mr. Abdi, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
And we have a special appearance from our Deputy Director of DPW. How you doing tonight, sir?
Hey, Mayor, good evening.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Well, my first comment is in line with ordinance eleven eighty-seven, the relocation of the funds in Fund Nine. So, so far we have performed multiple inspections to our wastewater and water lines, on infrastructure, also mechanical and electrical equipment. So these inspections have allowed us to start working on the repair and replacement program for our wastewater plant, the water treatment plant, pump stations, tanks and towers. The things that we have accomplished so far in the few months, I will say, are huge, but there's still a lot, a long road ahead. So this is going to help us a lot in what we need to achieve. But I got to say that we're moving in the right direction, so I think the future is looking bright. My second comment related also with the relocation of the funds is that we're working with our Director, Joe Kurnaway, on a five-year and ten-year capital project program for our water and wastewater infrastructure. We're planning to present this to the administration and finance so that way we can relocate funds in the future for this infrastructure. And this plan will outline the specific milestones related with the city projected growth, which is a very important thing. My last comment that I received five minutes ago is the living shoreline and Water Street is having a planting event on May fifteenth during the all day, so public is invited to participate. That's all I have for now.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for Ignatia? Sir, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Good evening, Chief.
Mayor, council members, good evening, citizens. Just a few things to cover. Boy, Saturday was a busy day. We were, the farmer's market started things off and then it went from that. So I've visited most of the events that were going on and we have some really good people that organize these events. I was very impressed with the location for the, the farmer's market out here. They have it organized very well and my wife spent a lot of money out there. And so I stopped by the Decoy Festival and such nice people there and just, you know, you can tell they've got their act together and they've done that. That wasn't their first rodeo. And, and then we closed things out with Defender's Day. So I think we got lucky with Defender's Day in the fact that just to the north of us, on the other side of ninety-five, there's some neighborhoods that got hammered with some, there were some severe storms in the area. So in my opinion, I think we made the right decision with everything that was decided by the, the city administration. Just wanted to weigh in on that. Good news, two recruits started April twenty-ninth in the Harford County Sheriff's Office Academy. So Andre White and William Sheckels, they're both in there. They got through their first week and so they're doing well and their, their arms are a little sore, but they're, they're doing well. And we're expecting them about a December twenty twenty-five graduation for them. So, and in closing, I just want, between now and our next council, So, and in closing, I just want, between now and our next council meeting, we'll have Police Week. So, it actually, all the remembrance events started last Friday. We had Maryland Fallen Heroes down in Delaney Valley. Tomorrow morning, the Command from our office has been invited to participate with the Sheriff's Office. They're having a Fallen Heroes Remembrance Program at the Sheriff's Office. Monday, the 12th, Hartford County Government is having a remembrance program. And then, obviously, Police Week in DC will be going on from May 11th through the 15th, and the Unity Tour will be traveling through Hartford County again. So, that's all for remembering the 165 officers that were killed in the line of duty in 2024. So, our community is always supportive of us, and we appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. Any questions for Chief Crass? Appreciate it, sir. Thank you. We're going to move on to, and thank you all my directors for all your updates. We appreciate. We're going to move to comments from the Mayor's Office real quick. What a weekend we had here in Havertie Grace, and Mr. Bruce Wills, who is the, the Commandant of the Trolley Program here in Havertie Grace, told me this weekend was the busiest weekend he ever had for our Trolley Program so far. We had nearly 1,200 people moved around this weekend on the trolley for a total of 577 miles, and that's really cool. A lot of tourists, a lot of visitors, a lot of, a lot of Havertie Grace people being moved around, and the coolest thing is, it doesn't burn any emissions, just runs all that trizy. So, to move people from point A to point B and not hurt the planet Earth, that's pretty cool. So, we're very happy with the Trolley Program. First Fridays was, was packed, and we had the Decoy Festival this weekend, we had the Defender's Day this weekend, we had farmer's markets, and like I always said, a real city can handle it all, and we handle it all, and we have a great staff and great people. And, you know, if, if one thing doesn't tickle your fancy, then, then just go to the next thing. There's all kinds of things to do in a city of Havertie Grace, and we appreciate all that. And so, with that said, I'm going to keep my comments short tonight, but I do want to, do actually just want to take a moment to recognize the election tomorrow and thank all the candidates who are running. And there's been a couple of years, in the last five years, where we didn't have many people run. I mean, I think last year, nobody ran. It was just three people running for three seats. So, but there's a lot of people saying Havertie Grace has voter apathy, but I wanted, I wanted to clear something up really quick. Havertie Grace does not have voter apathy. I've been through seventeen years as an elected official in Havertie Grace. If the citizens are not happy, they'll come out in numbers, and they will. I've seen it before. They'll come out in waves, and they'll vote to either protect something they like or to change something they don't like. So, I think with the good amount of citizens running, I think we have, will have a good turnout tomorrow, because I, I think all the candidates bring out, they work hard, they, they bring people out, and I think it'll be good to see a good turnout. But I just don't want anybody to say, because I've seen this written, like, oh, voters in Havertie Grace are so apathetic. No, 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 they're not. Trust me when I tell you that. Sometimes it's, might seem that way, but when they want change, they'll come out. They know exactly where the polls are. So, to everyone who's running a good race, thank you, and I look forward to seeing everybody at the polls tomorrow. You know, this is a wonderful thing, all great people running, and it's what democracy is all about. So, thank you very much. Those are my comments. And we're going to move to council comments. Councilmember Schneges.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Administration, citizens in the audience and at home. I'll start by mentioning that our next Planning Commission meeting is Thursday, May 15th, at 6:30 PM here in the council chambers. Next, I'd love to invite you out this Saturday to the Mother's Day Market, 10 AM to 4 PM on the 400 block of Franklin Street. Last year was the first year, and it was a big success, and you know there's plenty of time to get something special for those loved ones in your life. When you're done shopping, come on down to the Seventh Annual Lockhouse Beer and Wine Festival. It's from 11 to 5 PM. There will be food, beverages, and entertainment for your liking. I also would like to send best wishes to the candidates. Tomorrow, it's a big day for you, and I'm proud of all of you for stepping up. Citizens, please come out and exercise your right to vote. And lastly, to all that hold the title, Happy Mother's Day. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Schneges, and good evening, Councilmember Robertson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, city staff, ladies and gentlemen still here and at home. It's good to see a pretty full audience at this point in the evening, so thank you all for being here. Yeah, I want to echo everybody's comments on the election tomorrow. I'm very appreciative that we have the number of candidates that we do. You know, I'm stepping off the dais, so I'm glad that there are many people to give the voters a choice. So, Liz, George, Scott, Councilmember Booger, Councilmember Jones, Vicky Miller, and Matt Ellis. I didn't count my fingers. Did I get everybody? Dave, Dave Martin. Dave Martin, former council member, Dave Martin. Yeah, so thank you guys for stepping up and, you know, fighting the fight and, you know, getting on. And I'll tell you, I, I ran my first race in 2016 and lost by 15 votes. I was relatively new to the city. A lot of people didn't know me, and, you know, ended up staying involved, getting on a commission, and the next year in 2017, I ran and won pretty handily. So, you know, whether you come out victorious or not, I just encourage you to stay involved, you know, stay with it, learn as much as you can, and perhaps run again. I do want to put something out. Councilmember Boyer mentioned that we should probably do this via resolution, so I move via resolution to light the lighthouse on June 11th or during the week of June 11th for the winning house at Havertie Grace Elementary's colors.
Second.
Counsel, I have a motion by Councilmember Robertson, second by Councilmember Boyer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That was easy.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's probably the least contentious thing we've ever done. All right. Well, with that being said, I'll save my final comment, comments for my final council meeting and all that. I just want to say thank you to everybody, Administration, April. I miss our political chats over wine, you know, and all that good stuff. So, anyway, that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. Councilmember Booger.
Well, Mayor, Council, Directors, citizens in the audience, and citizens who are still, still at home, thank you for tuning in, and thank you for coming out tomorrow, and, you know, whether you want to vote or not, just come on out and meet the candidates, have a pleasant conversation, maybe learn a little bit about somebody, go in there and, and shoot your favorite candidate, right? So, I definitely encourage the process. There's plenty of us out there, be plenty of good conversations to be had prior to you walking in there. A lot of, a lot of folks don't know until they walk up to you and have a chat before they walk into the polls. Would you not agree? I mean, it's just, and so...
A lot of folks have one or two in mind, but maybe not the third.
They're like, hmm, you know, what do I do? And, you know, am I obligated for to cast all three, so on and so forth? And you just, you know, you're like, yeah, okay. And then you just explain who you are and the seriousness and the mature amount of work that you do for the city to move the city forward. It is work, and it will take a lot of your time. A lot of it's good time, happy time, because you're moving the ball constantly forward. In closing, I want to go ahead and thank everyone who showed up for the Troop 967 Breakfast at the American Legion. That was fantastic. The Scouts there did an amazing job. CP, your family, always great to see them out there. Wonderful experience, and I will steal your thunder, I know they raised some, some good funds for a great cause. In closing, I want to thank the Susquehanna Hold Company, the police, the EMT, and the ambulance corps for keeping us safe at night. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Booger, and we're going to go to comments from Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council, Administration, citizens in the audience, and citizens at home. It was a phenomenal Saturday and I, and Friday, and I'm going to say First Friday, kudos, Bridgette, to you and Lori. I just looked out and just smiled. I mean, packed, and lots of young people, families. It was just really a beautiful day, and there was a little bit of rain. Where we were situated, it was raining on this side and not raining on this side. So, that was kind of fun. We just scooted our chairs out where it wasn't raining. But it was just, congratulations on such a great First Friday. I also attended, we have a new business, Totally Baked by Tay. I went there and just got too much stuff, but it was all good, and yes, I, my niece and I ate it all. It's like you have to take a break, but it was just so good and so fresh, and she's just going to be a real success. So, if you haven't visited, please make sure you do that. I wanted to say congratulations, Chief, on your team's bust. That was phenomenal work. And I also attended the Arts Commission. They had their annual tea with a reenactment honoring Harriet Tubman. That was also a wonderful event. The room was packed, and we have two of our newest Arts Commission members, I think, are still here. Jennifer Joseph and Laura, are they, did they leave? Not, not here, okay. So, I just wanted to give them a shout-out for jumping in and helping to support that. We are looking for new members for the Arts Commission and also for the Historic Preservation Commission, so if you are interested, please send me an email. And then, I am, I want to say that I'll also look forward to seeing everyone tomorrow. It's going to be a long day, rain here and there, but, you know, I've been talking to all the candidates, and we've been having a lot of fun getting to know each other. So, just looking forward to that being a very impactful day. And then lastly, I'd like to say that I'm going to miss you, Jason. It, I have not known you long, but it's, it's been, I, I think that we'll know each other for a long time, we'll talk for a long time. So, it's just been fabulous knowing you and sitting next to you, and so I will miss you, and good luck in the future.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones, and we're going to go to comments from Councilmember Boyer.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for your support of the amendments to the comprehensive plan. I think this is a great example of how we all worked together and had sessions and listened to people and incorporated it in there, working with staff just to make things fine-tuning it, et cetera, so that we have a really good project, product that'll, we can lean into moving forward and hopefully bring great things for our city. I want to remind everybody that the Second Annual Romper Rump, Roper Rump is on the 10th at 1 PM at the Legion, and it should be interesting. You'll see a wide variety of people dressed in very ropery outfits. It's just interesting to watch, especially among the, the Mother's Day sales going on. It's just even more interesting to see it all. So, the Green Team is going to have their annual meeting on the 14th, not the 14th, that's wrong. The Green Team Annual Meeting is on the 8th at 7 PM, and on the 14th, they have their movie at 7 PM at the Opera House. And Councilwoman Robertson, I just want to thank you so much for your leadership, especially with the budget. You, your ability to fine-tune things and to explain it and drill down on things and, and find money where, where things just don't make sense are truly appreciated, especially for your ability this year to find a significant amount of money so we can do good things for a couple of really important people in the city of Havertie Grace. So, thank you very much. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Boyer, and we're going to go to comments from the Council President.
Mr. Mayor, Council, citizens all, Jason, I too would like to say how much of a pleasure it's been to serve with you these past seven years. You've been a consummate friend, you've been very diligent on the budget, you hold us all accountable, and, you know, I thank you so much for, for everything you've done for the city. Thank you so much for everything you've done, along with everybody else at the, at the Legion for, for the Scouts, helping us find the new home and making sure we're taken care of there. On April 22nd, I hosted the Cub Scouts, boys and girls, from Troop 802 in Aberdeen here and taught them all about government and everything, and, and it was pretty cool. Then we had the Court of Honor at Troop 965. My son finished up his year as senior patrol leader, so he's about to age out and hopefully get his eagle soon. Saturday, we had the 967 Pancake Breakfast, again, mentioned earlier. Thank you so much. And then, last night, we had the Court of Honor for Troop 967, which is the, the girls' troop, and my daughter received her tenderfoot and her second-class rank, and then was sworn in as chaplain. So, that's pretty cool. But still, the highlight of my weekend is I got to see Twiggy, the water skiing squirrel.
Yes.
Yeah, it was pretty darn cool. It was, it was really cool. Got cool sunglasses and all, and it was, it was really awesome. But, he said, all the squirrels are rescues. He's on like squirrel number 12, and just really cool guy. His parents started it back in like 19, what did he say, 1979 or something? And he's been traveling the country, just making a living doing that. So, it's pretty cool. So, our Havertie Grace High School Lady Warriors, maroon and white, they tomorrow are playing Patterson Mill for the Upper Chesapeake Bay Athletic Conference Championship. They won the, they just won the Haydom Championship, and Patterson Mill won the Susquehanna Championship, so they play tomorrow at 4 o'clock at Patterson Mill. You will have to go on your phone and download a GoFan app, because you can't buy tickets there, or when you show up, you could scan the QR code at the door, but that's 4 o'clock there. It's going to be awesome. Thank you so much for everybody for passing the Music Boosters 5K, and while you're supporting the Music Boosters, come out on, at 6 PM on Friday at the Lighthouse for Jazz by the Bay, which would be pretty cool. And I would like to give a shout-out to all the nurses out there, because tomorrow starts Nurses Week from May 6th to May 12th, and it goes out to my wife, too. Thank you so much. Oh, and good luck on the staying dry tomorrow in the election and everything, and Councilman Booger said, if it ain't raining...
We ain't raining.
That's right.
Okay, we're going to go to Item 19, which is adjournment. I have a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Booger. Did you make a motion?
I did.
Second by Councilmember Jones. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion to adjourn carries six year and affirmative. The time is 9:16. Everybody be good. We'll see you back here on the 19th at the second council meeting. Don't forget, we have a public hearing on the tax rate and water and sewer rate next Monday night. Thank you.[1796.78]